Okay, it's nine o'clock, let's start the meeting. Mr. Andrew, is there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, two action items. Seventeen A is a home health aid home anchor appointment we can address after number fifteen with the HR director. Seventeen B is an Evan Street closure amendment we can address with Wayne after number seven.
Okay, is there any reports from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I had a complete streets meeting and then also emergency management staffing.
I had an IEIC Help Me Grow meeting and Region Nine Legislative and Communications Committee meeting.
I've got community health with you, Commissioner Stevenson, and wellness and the trip to Washington.
Okay. I've got PAC meeting, community health and wellness and emergency management meeting.
Yeah, I've got a meeting with the legislators.
All right, if there's not anything else, that'll be our agenda for today. All right, we've got minutes of May twenty-second.
Go vote.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, Gene number two.
Today I'm reviewing the claims totaling two hundred fifty-five thousand six sixty-five sixty-two for approval. Is there any questions I'll try and answer?
I also have one, but I can't find it here yet. The background on the loans for Cotton River watershed. They knew it's all from the Minnesota pollution control agency. Were they over the course of several years, because I don't very remember, or is...
What page is that?
My screen.
Onscreen is fifteen.
Is that the first one is nine thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars?
Yes.
All of those are part, let's see, of zero-one-six-eleven. So that would be the septic loan program.
Oh.
Correct, Gene?
Yeah.
So those will be payments to the MPCA based on the loans from way back.
That was, that's repayment of those loans, right?
Right. So there's no county dollars there, that's all just managed through the septic loan program with AT and planning as a way.
Make a motion to approve.
No second.
Okay, I'm motioning a second on the claims. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, number three.
Second item is findings of fact to approve those, they were drafted by the county attorney's office. We, basically the findings identify that we're adding John Bowdy's parcel to CD sixty-three. It will carry benefits of fifty-four thousand one twenty. There's an assessment amount that's going to be charged and an outlet fee. And the cost of all expenses incurred with this process will be billed to John Bowdy and his payment will be due within sixty days. This land is already tiled in, it isn't likely to wait for anything. It's land that was there correcting the way it looks.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Mr. Andrew, will you call it off?
Christopher Bird?
Yes.
Christopher Potter?
Yes.
Christopher Winchard?
Yes.
Christopher Parker?
Yes.
Christopher Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, my last item is the twenty-seventeen audit engagement letter that we need to have signed. Apparently they didn't get it to me sooner, we've already begun the process of the twenty-seventeen audit. Document will require signature of the board chair, the administrator and myself to begin the actual audit. And in addition to that, we had talked a while back about private audit and how we would proceed. And needless to say, if we, if the board opted to go with a private audit, we have to notify the state auditors by August first this year, even numbered year. It wouldn't be for the twenty-eighteen audit, it would be for the twenty-nineteen audit. I have contacted a couple counties to find out, you know, what they did. And obviously there was a resolution that gets passed in the notification letter. I asked then for some, what they incurred for savings. And basically Big Stone County, which is smaller than we are, would have saved like thirteen thousand dollars. But they ended up doing a single audit, which added another six thousand. So their bids that they had from a private firm ranged from twenty-five thousand to thirty-two thousand two fifty. And then if it went to a single audit, it was thirty-one thousand two forty-one seven fifty. And we are averaging for the years twenty-ten through twenty-sixteen fifty-seven thousand. So I don't know what the board's intent is. The way I understand, we would just need to notify the state auditors that, I mean, if that's the desire, that we would be looking for a private audit, we wouldn't have to have that firm locked in at that point. We just would, you know, be telling them we'd be going that direction. So I just bring that information. I know that I will be going to the auditors conference up at Criggins. There's always many, many firms there that, I mean, there's I. Bailey's, the Clifton Allen Larson's, that kind of big firms that deal with state, with county audits. And they obviously would be prepared, you know, to share information with me at that point. And I would look into it if that's the board's intent.
What's the notification date, August?
August first of this year.
And then if we make the commitment that we want to do a private audit, we have to do that? We couldn't say, oh yeah, we decided we're gonna stay with the state?
I don't know the answer to that officially. I don't know if he can back out.
When does the state require notice? I mean, state, over the years, they just automatically do it and the process gets started when?
Well, they, our audit started really, or the twenty, let's see, twenty-seventeen audit, they started doing some things back in November, you know, little things here and there. They'd ask for pieces of information, board minutes, agenda items, you know, things that they could start looking through if they were looking for stuff to do down easy, so.
I certainly would like to get more information, if you could, when you go to this conference, to see what others have experienced. It sounds to me like there's, could be the possibility of significant savings or, and, I don't know.
The only way we're gonna, we've talked about this for quite a few years already. The only way we're really gonna know is to pursue it in some fashion, more than we've done. We've talked and always, always kind of just, okay, we'll do this again. Some of, some of the controversy around the auditors, state auditor's office in the last couple of years. When is your conference?
June twentieth, so we, I would have time to, the only, I mean, the thing is that when I would come back from the conference, I'm not sure that I would know about any bid amounts. I mean, I'm sure it takes some time to do that. But we would, I'm sure they could give me a ballpark figure, you would think, of what an, what their, maybe they can give me what they're billing other counties. I, I don't know what they can share with me. But I can get what I can, but we would have to make a decision in July.
But that's public information from any county that's had it done.
I suppose it would be, yes.
Well, every county, they probably aren't familiar with the exact way our audits. Every county's gonna be somewhat different. So you'd almost have to go to get to the bid process to get a fairly accurate.
I know, I asked Steve this morning, you know, we are a single audit every year with the state auditor.
Right.
And as Big Stone said, this year they had to do a single audit. Now, I don't know if that's because they don't apply for the grants that we do or do some of the things that we do, but we always have a single audit. So when I looked at it, I went to their high end, you know, they were at thirty-two thousand was their highest bid. And with ours being fifty-seven, you know, there's, there's a savings there from that.
I guess I would, another concern I would like you to investigate there would be is, you know, if they've had problems, what kind of problems are they? You know, how have they been able to deal with them? Just kind of in general, how the operation went?
I know, a number of years ago, I think it was AMC, I mentioned I spent a little time with Clifton Larson Allen, stopped and talked to them about this very thing. They are local, but they told me at that time that the actual people who do the audit for counties for them would not be local, because they don't have anyone out of this office that would be doing it. That may have changed, I don't know. But I mean, they did talk about some savings, but I, I, we didn't really get into the dollar amounts.
Yeah. I don't think that, I think that our firm down here, my guess is that, you know, you could work with them on a one-on-one a little bit, that you would have some physical contact if you, you know, if you wanted that. I. Bailey is out of Medelia or, I. Nacato maybe?
I. Nacato, yeah.
Okay.
My, my concern would be, your first couple of years, there's gonna be more preparation on, on our part, correct? Because it's a different way of doing things. You know, we're kind of used to how the state does things, so we kind of know what they're looking for. But is, is that true, that there might, there may be more time spent for preparation on the first year?
Right. I mean, I would guess that as well. You just have to get used to their methodologies and what the requirements are of us. And I think that the good thing is, obviously, and we, we had talked about this the last time, we didn't want to start that in twenty-sixteen for the twenty-seventeen audit, which would occur in twenty-eighteen when we had an election. So this one is a little bit easier, I mean, moving forward, it might be a little bit easier to prepare for. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, I like the idea of the competitive bidding. I think that keeps us, you know, close to the best value for the auditing, you know. So interested to hear what you have to say when you get back.
I will prepare RBA for probably the first meeting in July, so that if there were follow-up questions, we still would have one more meeting to make a final decision, see that works out.
The other, another question would be is, when, when have they been seeing the audits completed? You know, the state has gotten better in the last year or two maybe, but they're still not great. And, you know, would they actually get it to us in time or do some good to the board?
Well, I think that some of them have been done like in March and April.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be much more helpful.
The audit would be more, much more value at that point than it's in October or something.
And it makes more sense to the public that you're, if you, if we're publishing a statement, it's more appropriate to publish it shortly after the year is concluded as opposed to a year after. It makes us look like we haven't done what we're supposed to do. And yet, I know our people work hard and that we're doing what we're supposed to, it's just a timely.
The state has gotten much better than they were, because I can remember a time when it was almost a year later before we got the audit back. But we're still a ways out.
So I will work on that. But you just need to authorize then the audit engagement letter for twenty-seventeen.
I'll second it. Any motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Chuck, you have the official document for signature. Very good, thank you.
Five drainage repairs. Just a pretty typical list of drainage repairs. Then you have one cleanout and then a second cleanout with those completed and just reducing the retainer that we held back for leveling slopes and, and final work. The others are pretty typical repairs.
This, this is the first time you've done cleanouts in the spring? Or have you done spring cleanouts?
First time since we've been doing it.
So how, how did it go? Did it go as planned?
Pretty decent. There's a few farmers that were kind of getting a little pushy to, to get everything leveled off so they can get planted. But for the most part, I think it worked pretty well. That system definitely needed, you could see the water drop three, four feet in the ditch, so.
I know they were a little slow to get the leveling down sixty-nine. I don't think, I think the renter planted it or all of it. I'm gonna have to compensate him for leaving some land for, whether that's, the system will do that? What happens in those cases? Is that the?
It's never been a come across before, so the board will have to decide.
But do we, is that the fault of the contractor or is that the fault of the county?
He had until June first, wasn't he? As far as I know, he needs his timeline.
Well, the bad part is once it, once the corn's been planted in there, then they want to level it and they take out more if they left alone. I haven't talked to the renters since. I know there was, I'm sure there was other people on the ditches as well, so.
There is one stretch where the land wasn't planted before we got between there. So I gotta come back in the fall and finish that.
Yep.
I didn't want to get involved about that. You, you and I talked about it actually, yes.
On sixty-seven here, did they have the buffers planted already or?
No, they're not planted yet. They were, they were staked out, so the farmers had planted up to our stakes already. So we kept the spoils.
Then was it had buffers on it?
One question I wanted to add, this is for information. You've got quite a few who have blowout on them. Okay, so, so I get, I have a clear understanding what you mean by blowout. Is that where the tile is broken and caves in and washes out?
Yeah, it's a wash, that's just a check mark on, on the drainage.
That's place you can mark on it, okay.
Yeah.
I, I was just curious exactly what it meant. Did blowout, could have, to me, could have been a little different than that.
It's more, more of a tile wash out, either collapsed or, or seconded or anything. But yeah, it's just the, the general checkbox in the program.
Move to pay the repairs.
I'll second it. Okay, we have motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, number six.
We opened bids on May thirtieth for the two projects in Springfield, Sod four, from Central Street to Highway fourteen and County Road five, from the bridge over the Cotton River to Highway fourteen. They have the summary bid. All three bids were over our estimate. Look at the low bid. The obvious thing that's higher than what we expected was traffic control. And that, that was higher than what, they were over our estimate.
This, the low bid that we ever worked with?
SMC, yeah, we worked with them.
Oh, okay.
That's their official name.
Okay, sorry, I didn't recognize that. And that's thirty days of construction, right?
Thirty working days. Up to thirty working days, usually they'd get it done sooner, but.
If they do, they're gonna do the resurfacing and the curb work on that corner?
Well, I'm sure they'll have a sub come in and do the curb work. I believe they had Hoffman listed. Yeah, I think it was Hoffman first, so.
Well, that'll help on that, that corner from fourteen and five, they're a lot. So I'll move to approve the low bid.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number seven.
Seven, I don't know if we update, stop making any questions. Starting with the engineering, we've done some completions of our last year's projects on County Road six and thirteen grating project. They replaced the sod on all the places they were supposed to. So now there's a thirty-day maintenance period for that, but they have to water that, keep it green. And they fixed an erosion spot down by the ponds when they were putting sod in. And there's another erosion fix from the, over the winter that Mathis has to fix, but that's been a little too wet for them to do that yet, so that's the last thing to get done. Then that project will be completed. The County Road eight, eight bridge west of the CPI, that was paved and shouldered and striped. So that project is complete. Now we just have to do the final paperwork so we can bring the final in for board approval. Then the CIR projects, we've been told by the recycle contractor that they're gonna, they're planning to start the week of June eighteen. And this projects you just awarded. Haven't heard anything new on the Prairieville Bridge replacement project. The County Road twenty bridge replacement project, we've got shot drawings for the bend sections on that project. So that's in for review and approval. So they, they have ordered their bike anyway. The Roundabout project is planned to start after July fourth, and we have a pre-con on June twentieth, so we'll find out more information then. The, the Rock is gonna do their field inspections for the ADA project in late, late June, is that right? So we'll have more on that after, after this month. And Andrew has updated for network.
Currently we have forty-six repairs in drainage DB. About nine of them are waiting, they're completed just waiting on the invoicing to show in, so, and into thirties again. Four are opened in, in progress, we've opened up and swayed in front of the grain. And then the rest are kind of, stuff's been planted, just waiting for the fall work to, to go back to goals. So hopefully we have a good handle on over the summer and starting to get it in the fall. The buffers eager, talked with them last week, should be coming in early this week. Now, the gig going on, those hundred forty acres, buffer seeding on those systems.
So I have that. And then for future projects, I wanted to mention that Kent's been out surveying County Road seven for the grating project for next year. And Dave's been out looking at the city of Sleeppad projects, collecting data and measuring things up for projects in that, that part of town for next year. And I've been working on the design of the concrete overlay on twenty-nine. There might be a few changes from what we've originally talked about, but we'll talk about that after I get some more definite answers. Also, I was able to put out a request for the Environmental Services and the Cultural Resources Unit for the Franklin Bridge, for the Hail Bridge. In turn, I see they've sent letters to the tribal consultation and Indian Affairs departments, so they're gonna be reviewing here in the next thirty days. And Environmental Services is gonna be doing inspection for bats on the bridge in the June-July timeframe. So there's action, just letting you know. It does take, that's part of the reason it takes a lot of time.
What's the point of the bat inspection?
If they find bats, we're probably gonna have to net the whole bridge to prevent the bats from moving in before, before we demolish it. To keep them out so we don't destroy their habitat. Same thing if there's swallows or birds nesting under there, we have to net them for that.
Your responsibility, you out there chasing everything away now.
I'll drive down there once a day.
That would be probably a late winter project to net it before they move in. Moving to maintenance, we completed hauling chips for seal coating. We've been doing a lot of blading and hauling gravel on our gravel roads here the last lately. Crack sealing, we're getting close to done with the roads we want to seal coat, we've had a couple of days left. We've done a lot of robe ditch culvert and tile repairs. A lot of our culverts, our concrete culverts, when they were installed, they weren't tied together back in the early days. So the outside pieces have walked apart because of frost heating over the years. And so we relay and then we drill holes and tie them. So they're good for another thirty, forty years at least. So guys have been doing quite a few culverts. We've done some top cutting and some shoulder reclaiming, mostly on County Road thirteen between lands getting loaned. They were out doing some blading on County Road twenty-nine shoulder yesterday, trying to pull some of the gravel back in, get rid of the drop-off edge with the pavement. We plan to start seal coating in June if we can get a stretch of weather that's decent. I mean, now they have it, where we can order two or three loads of oil without having to fret of rain, because they don't have to take the oil back. Each load is worth quite a few thousand dollars. They also plan to start weed spraying in June. The thistles haven't been too bad yet, we've been watching, but they are starting to show up. And there's this garlic mustard stuff I don't know too much about, but we have some down on the bottom road and we have to spray that early, so we're looking to do that here pretty soon. Other than that, just other small projects.
I do have one thing, and I've talked to Wayne about this already, and I got a second call from a resident of Springfield on the east side of town where County Five, on the south side of the highway is, is blacktop. North side of the highway is gravel. And some of the residents live within a couple of blocks or two of County Five. They were complaining about dust. And they called me back again, letting the rest of you know, individual may not, may call one of you because he wasn't happy with me when he called me. Current policy is we don't oil, and that's Wayne and I talked about this, we don't oil or dust control. I mean, that's responsibility of people who live along if they want. And I did tell them I would bring it up to the rest of the board, that this was policy. If anybody wanted to change it, that would be, I'm not promoting to change it. I think it's, it's up to the individuals. I know other places do it. I actually personally live in the township and have a street in the city of Springfield that creates dust that blows in the mud yard. Have the opposite effect of what he does. It's, it's individuals, I think you're right, Wayne, that's what you need to do is to, if group can get together and put oil on it and.
He is gonna do dust control now.
They are. I think that's done already then, because I went by there this morning and it looked like, okay. Well, maybe they won't, maybe I, maybe he, it'll, he got more out of our conversation than I thought he did. When we got done with it, I didn't think he was very thrilled with what I'd said, so.
He wasn't happy with what you said and he wasn't happy with what I said.
So, okay, I just, I just wanted the rest of you to be aware that in case your phone rang, you had somebody know what was, what was happening.
That's it. Okay, any other questions in regards to that?
I move to accept the file report.
Second. Go ahead. Motion is second from, is it, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Seventeen B.
I got a call from City of Evan, and they wanna set up a tent earlier in the morning on Conuson Street. So they're asking to close it from eight AM till one AM, and instead of twelve PM till one AM. And I talked with the sheriff, and he's, he's okay with the change.
Oh, I'll second it.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you.
Number eight?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce Jen Mala, she works out online as our community engagement lead there. And she's been working with me on the, um, mental health and wellness action team. I think you're aware that one of our primary, um, community health improvement plans includes improving mental wellness, um, in the county. Mental illness, mental wellness, they're two completely different things on opposite ends of the continuum, and why we still work on mental illness, and we have programs in our county, in our public health department to work with people that have mental illness. Part of our responsibility is prevention and encouragement and improvement of mental wellness, to try to prevent additional mental health issues. So, our action team, um, is developed of several members and, um, the entire county, and it's been in operation a little over a year now. And, um, we do look at mental illness issues as well, one of the issues we, um, kind of are working on as well as with the jail mental health, which I can feel for, where we were kind of working with the law enforcement on that. But one of the, um, subcommittees is prevention, so it's about, um, mental wellness. So I've asked Jen to just kind of explain to you a little bit about what we've been doing in the, um, prevention area of that, of that committee. So, we, or Alina, also in Buffalo Hospital, and they started what's called a bum stack project. Um, so they had some unforeseen instances happen in their facility where they had a couple of their physicians pass away, they had a lot of burnout, they needed to do something with the, um, mental wellness of their physicians as well as other, um, individuals that worked there. So they created this bum stack program, thought it was fantastic, decided to roll it out, um, throughout their town, and it's seen really good results. So we have taken bits and pieces of their program and implemented it throughout our county. So I'll share with you some of the work that, um, has happened throughout this last year and a little bit of our plan as we move forward. So again, we're promoting health through happiness. Uh, some of the work that we have done is very simple, easy, um, steps that individuals can take, so none of this is all that difficult, it really is prevention work and maybe just, it is just getting the word out. So one thing is doing three good things. So with that, we had created, um, some articles to put into all the local newspapers, um, send stuff to local industries, ask the schools to participate. And all it is, is for two weeks, you write down three things that you're grateful for, can be in the beginning of the day, end of the day, um, so all it is, is you do it for two weeks, and your happiness is supposed to increase by ten percent. So the studies show that just by retraining your mind to think of positive things, um, that your happiness increases. So as humans, we a lot of times dwell on the negative, which we can think of if you've ever had a toothache, it's probably all you think about that day till you can get into the dentist. But there's probably not too many other times throughout your day or week that you think about your teeth, or your smile, or, you know, how grateful you are for them. So it's really just retraining our minds to not always dwell on those negative parts. Um, so we've worked with work sites to do this, a lot of ways that they have done it is at the beginning of their team meetings, I know we do this at the medical center. Um, is we start out some of our team meetings by just three people shares one thing that they're grateful for, and then we move into our meeting, so we start off the meeting on a positive note. Um, we also had worked with the schools to do some of this work, and so they were doing, um, shared some information with families. And at, um, family meals, they could do one thing they're grateful for and one grumble, so the kids can still talk about the things that maybe didn't go so good that day, but to also know that there's stuff to be grateful for on every day. Uh, we've been working a lot on gratitude, 'cause we know that it, when you show, um, gratitude, you can better cope with stress. And so we did have gratitude walls throughout, um, at all of the local grocery stores throughout Brown County, so it was at Springfield, Sleepy Eye, um, and then at the two, so Hy-Vee and Cash Lines here in New Ulm, as well as the rec center. So heard some great things on that, we did that in January and February. We also have, if you guys have seen the billboards that we currently have up, uh, we have one in New Ulm, Sleepy Eye and Springfield. Um, it says, "Think Happy Thoughts, It's Better For You Than Gratitude," so our action team... Oh, but then, sorry, then sauerkraut, yeah, not gratitude, sauerkraut. So the team thought that that would be something, just to get people, again, to think of the positive things, so we've heard some good feedback on that. One mom who drives by there to take her kids to Kids Excel every morning, as they drive by, they share something that they're grateful for, have, um, so that's their morning routine, now as they pass it. Another thing that we have had, uh, industries as well as youth groups and things do is to write gratitude letters. Um, and so we know that sharing gratitude also increases our happiness, um, and it's not always about receiving, and, you know, it's receiving and getting. And so we did bring some cards, so you guys can all write a thank you card to somebody who has influenced your life or you're grateful for. Uh, we have done this at a few places, some people just do a text message and they get the response back, like, "Are you okay?" It's not every day that you get a nice message or a handwritten letter from somebody. So we've seen some positive things happen by, um, encouraging people to write gratitude letters. So we've also done gratitude journaling, I know some industries, I know Brown County has purchased gratitude journals, um, and asked people to do gratitude journaling. On the back of the sheet, we passed this out, and industries have printed it off, and again, it's the three good things, so it doesn't have to be a journal, you can just put some paper next to your bed or wherever you want it to do your gratitude. Uh, and then another thing that we're doing is the Random Acts of Kindness, so we've just started some of the planning on that, but a few programs that are currently happening. Um, so at most of the schools in Brown County, the last week of school, they did a kindness and chalk project, and so it was very simple, they just had their older students, as well as some teachers, take chalk and go out and write positive messaging on the chalk, so as the younger kids or all the kids were leaving school the last week, they had this positive messaging to, like, kick summer off on a good note. Um, I walked by some of the schools and we took pictures, and it was really cute to see what the kids wrote, like, "You're the key to kindness," and, um, so we did, I do have some of that information too. Um, so that currently just happened. Another thing that will be happening this summer into the fall is kindness rocks. So what this is, is we're asking youth groups, um, industries can even do it, we're doing it, our wellness team at the medical center, where you just get rocks, you paint them, you write kindness, or little positive messaging on them, and then you leave them around. So we'll leave them around the medical center, some industries will leave them around, um, some of the youth groups have done this and have left them. And Sleepy Eye and New Ulm actually, before we had started looking into this, they currently have Facebook pages and are trying to get it going, so we're partnering with those community members. Um, so we created just a little kindness rocks flyer and, um, you know, spread kindness one rock at a time, sharing how to do it. So we're just looking at positive messaging, easy things that we can do countywide, um, with all of our community members. Uh, another thing too that we are, our action team is assisting with is, um, Alina Health created a Change to Chill website. Um, and it's a free online resource that was created by teams for teens, and so it teaches them how to, um, stress less and gives them tools on how to do that. And so we're doing a partnership with the New Ulm High School this coming fall. Um, and then we are working with other schools throughout the district, I'll be going to Saint Mary's and Sleepy Eye in the fall and doing presentations and giving this information out too. So teens and youth have ways on how to stress less and some of that prevention work as well, so we'll be taking that countywide as our action team. Some more to come, we meet monthly. There's about nineteen of us, so it's a lot of us that are getting together and coming up with these ideas.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes.
I've had the opportunity of seeing the, the video that you have available a couple of different times, and actually one organization, um, I know that, in fact, they even commented on it when they reported to us, a bridge on center. They implement it, and they said that, you know, it just keeps everything, um, kind of on a positive note, you know, because if people come in there kind of grumbly or whatever, you know, it kind of changes that, that tone, and I think that's very effective. So I think that this is a very cost-effective, you know, way of making positive improvements, so thank you for those efforts.
Thank you, Jen, there's a lot of negative messages in the world today, and some of the smaller things, they're not small, but they may seem small to some people, but they, I think those messages do help attitudes and hopefully prevent things down their arms, so thank you.
I think the morning smiled each day, you know, we have a big gratitude board in our department, and it, it, it's just, it just, it just really helps you this new day, when you walk by and see somebody who's written something that they're grateful for, that has made them happy and that makes you smile, kind of like the, the billboard. I mean, every time you drive by it, you kind of chuckle a little bit, because happy thoughts are, aren't even better than, for you than sauerkraut, so it just makes you laugh a little bit every time I drive by one, so I think it's, I think it's helpful, so...
Mr. Chairman, this was a topic the Wellness Committee at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago talked at some length about, so certainly trying to be implemented in Brown County also.
Thinking about a positive attitude is just a wonderful thing, because it changes everybody's lives, it makes your work place better, makes your home life better. It's just, anything we can do to get there is worthwhile.
'Cause there's plenty of negative that's happening around the world and in our lives, and we're exposed to all that, and if you can just kind of train your brain to be thinking positive more and more every day, then it kind of balances out all those negative feelings and negative thoughts.
Turn on the TV and find negative.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Do we have a motion, can you see the number five?
I'll do it.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next is Jennifer, correct?
Yes. Jennifer Allison with the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, I actually like the gratitude, we just did that with our staff all year, trying to build relationships, we have a lot of relationships throughout the twenty counties we cover, and, um, even Tim, uh, Penny, our president, was signing thank you notes, and we just picked three partners you know the reason that you want to build a deeper relationship with, and it is important. Um, there are so many negative messages, and so we're trying to, um, promote change, so I definitely appreciated that last speaker. Um, I'm just here to give you an update and give you an overview of what we've done in the last year. Brown County's been, um, well, let me back up, uh, we're a regional foundation, McKnight started us in nineteen eighty-six, I think many of you know that. So we've been around thirty-plus years, we continue to focus on, um, regional development, economic issues, early childhood, address early childhood issues, and community vitality. So those three areas, um, I'll highlight in Brown County, we spent five million each year back into the twenty counties. I will say in Brown County, over the last, uh, two to three years, we've spent about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand back into those three areas. So we partner with the local lending institutions or financial institutions, so we're a gap lender, we have a variety of lending resources, we have equity. I'm gonna pass out our annual report when I'm done, and that really highlights one of our newest equity clients in Winnebago, Minnesota. And so, uh, besides the lending aspect, we also provide score chapter, we have technical assistance, we have three peer councils right now, have supported, uh, Region Nine put together a peer council and received grant dollars from us to start that, to help support those businesses, um, in that area. So in New Ulm and in Brown County here, we've supported recently Happy Joe's Pizza and Ice Cream Parlor, as well as the cell office of, I might mispronounce his last name, CAC. So those are two loans, and I know that, um, we partnered with France and Bank, we partnered with, um, a variety of other financial institutions, and we've done work in, in Springfield as, um, as well as other communities here in Brown County. Our second area focuses early childhood development, and I will say probably the lion's share of our resources over the past few years has, has really gone into, uh, that area. You guys in Brown County have a wonderful grant writer and partner in Betty Yuling, and I know she's partnered with us for many years, not only on the Early Childhood Initiative, which still continues to receive grant dollars and assistance. Um, we also launched our Early Childhood Dental Network here, uh, through Brown County. Early on, we launched our Quality Childcare Provider Training in Brown County. So the partnership here runs really deep with the early childhood, uh, group that we work with, and so we appreciate those partnerships, we can't do it alone, and, um, so we really appreciate the boots on the ground in the communities that we work in. Our, we also provide grant, or not only grants, but, uh, books to New Ulm schools, Sleepy Eyes, that N'Kuanis received about eight hundred books this last year. We're currently in our literacy grant round right now, so I have not reviewed those grants, but I know the announcement will be made shortly as to, um, the next grant round, uh, goes to. We've also supported home visiting programs here through the Minnesota Valley Act and Council. And so that's, they are implementing home-based curriculum, and last year we provided, uh, our Quality Childcare Provider Training to about twenty providers in the Brown County area. So we invite the surrounding communities as well. Community Vitality is our third area, and that, um, we currently support about twenty-six community foundations that utilize our five oh one C three. Uh, we also have about fifty-eight designated funds, um, under our umbrella, so donor advised funds, agency funds from throughout the region, and I will say, uh, we, our area of expertise, I guess, is our smaller communities. Obviously, New Ulm has a community foundation stand, not standalone, but Minnesota Community Foundation is their, um, parent's company, so to speak. But we, um, we do offer that service and have twenty-six other communities, some to be twenty-seven, um, once we add, uh, we just added Alden, but we'll be adding Houston and Houston County as well, so... That is an area of helping our communities capture the transfer of wealth and helping them build resources, so they have a permanent source of income for grant making in their communities. Anybody have any questions? Thank you for your past support, you've been a supporter since, uh, ninety-one, and I know in this year's letter we did after a small increase, so I hope that is something that you might consider going forward. I'm gonna pass out here the affiliate funds that I just mentioned, which are community foundations and our designated funds, there's some information in there too, and, um, so if you have any questions, please let us know. And the three stories that we highlighted in the annual report this year are the Equity Fund story and the, um, the Medellia Disaster Relief, which we were instrumental, as well as many other partners. And AmeriCorps, which we also have an AmeriCorps member here in New Ulm at the, um, I forget where they're located. They are located, uh, at the Minnesota Valley, uh, the head start here in New Ulm. Uh, thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Chairman, with Jennifer's visit today, um, we, our intent was to have two parts to this meeting, one is to get the report and see if there's any questions. And then to use this meeting as the appointment relative to the twenty nineteen budget, 'cause normally, uh, your president...
Tim.
Tim Penny would come in August, but with you here today, we at least wanted to have that discussion, and we could forego that August meeting and save some time. So I don't know if the board is prepared to do a... know if the board is prepared to do a preliminary number for the budget in 2019 or if you want to revisit this in August in the budget sessions, but we'll forego Tim's visit. You do.
He doesn't mind.
You serve a lot of counties.
Yeah. He likes getting out about and talking about what we do, so.
And the board has supported Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation in the amount of three thousand dollars since two thousand and five annually. So I don't know if you want to continue that or increase it four thousand, is in the letter of request.
Well, I do believe they do a lot of good work and we get obviously a lot of value. Being the budget is where we're at, I, I would consider the three thousand dollar contribution the same as what we have had in the past here. I don't know if there's been any other comment or concern in there, but I guess I'll, I'll move that as a motion.
Okay, the motions are second.
I'll second it.
Your motion is second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I, you know, just in interest of conversation, I don't know whether it's a full increase, but I, I was kind of maybe contemplating like a two and a half percent increase because I think this is, from what I've read here, this has been the same for several years. And I just, you know, I think two and a half, we continue with that as far as an increase. That would be a conservative way as far as maybe bring it to what the current need is. Again, I think they do good work.
I don't disagree with that at all, but I, at this point, I don't know what number to put down. I would like to get into the budget process. I'd like to have this a review. You know, we've got the information from this meeting and we do put things on to be reviewed, bring them back for review. So I would like to, I think that would be a thing we'd be interested in doing is to review it once more before we finalize a budget.
I'm certainly supportive of the three thousand, whether, you know, in a small increase. I, I don't think I have a problem with that. I'm just not ready to, what that number would be today, but we can certainly look at that. It's just a preliminary number, so.
And Mr. Chair, just, just to clarify, I, I was thinking more like a two and a half percent increase.
Yeah, and we can certainly amend that or change that later down the road if we feel that that's necessary.
I just, final comment to, there's a lot of people who come to us at budget time for money. So if we are conservative with our numbers, it gets on our end quite quickly, so.
Okay. All right. So those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a quick.
Just in the zero.
Okay.
Should be, we'll do number ten and then we'll take a break. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number ten is to approve a correction to VG Plate's Farm Subdivision plat that was recorded in May of 2017. The correction was submitted by Golden Mink of Sleepy Eye because of an incorrect legal description as well as an incorrect bearing and distance on the graphics of the plat. And then that correction would be to match a previously recorded deed. We go back to the attachments. Attachments one through three are the subject correction with attachment four being an expanded copy of the previously approved plat.
So it's basically always keeping.
Yeah, it's tidying up the legal description to match kind of what it should, should be.
So was this an error by the surveying people or do you know who made the, where the error happened? I mean, what I'm looking at is, was there, whoever was responsible for making the screw up should pay for it. Does that make sense to everybody? Because I'm, I'm sure there's work for our courthouse staff to renew some of this information, correct?
It would, it would need to be recorded again.
In addition to recording, I would assume.
Right. Which is a part of the, the initial recording is a part of the application fee that's submitted to the county.
So the county records or will charge a normal fee for the re-recording of the document.
Okay, well, it, it won't, it really won't be a cost for the county. Okay, that's what I'm, what I'm trying to get at. Okay, I'll move to approve it then.
Second. Okay, motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a quick minute break. Okay, we'll, we'll resume the meeting. Number eleven.
I'm here to review the survey that I did after the last Mitchner's meeting, board meeting that I was at last June when it was requested that I do a subject survey of the area comparison of the fees that are charged for liquor licenses.
I know after I looked at the survey, I went, they go all over the place. There's no uniformity. Except for the Sunday liquor, that was, that's uniform. Everything else is.
So Nicklet and Sibley County just have one, three, two on off sale. Doesn't matter. Yeah, but the only thing, you got conformity there, a Sunday liquor license. Everybody's got two hundred. Oh, no, one wants it on.
Yeah, we don't even have uniformity in our, within our county. The only one, and so I'm sure about that, I understand this right, that the three, two, one day, those are the things that we do with, like the special. Okay. We don't have too many of those in the county, do we?
No, that's the only one that I can think of. In some years, they don't even pop out through official, so.
When they only do it for one day, it's hard to charge them much because it doesn't make sense.
Well, it, it's nicer just to have them reported, you know, so we know that it's there and what's going on, so. I, I think we should probably increase the fee on the, on the, on an off sale there. Be more in line with everyone else. Obviously, we're way over.
The twenty dollar.
Yeah.
When do we usually address this or what's the?
With the annual fee review, which normally ends, happens toward the end of the year before implementation, January first. If there's a general consensus, we will bring this back after talking with staff about suggested fee increase and review that probably on the first of November and see what other departments have fee increases. I'm not sure that there's a statutory authority here, so it would fit under the miscellaneous and a public hearing for miscellaneous fees. But if there's a general consensus, we'll bring that back for discussion in November with other positive fees.
I think that would be a very good idea to do that.
Have a favorable.
Okay, just need a motion. Can you see the number five?
I'll move it.
Motion is second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for putting the effort into do that.
Yes.
Okay, then twelve.
And then I have the two tobacco licenses for the Hanska store, Fellers Co. of Panska, the Riding High, Saloon and Cobden. Approved licenses from July first of eighteen to June thirtieth of nineteen. It's just a continuation from previous years.
I'll move it. I'll second it. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is the club liquor license and Sunday liquor license and that is for the Sleepy Eye Golf Club. Again, continuation from July first of eighteen to June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen.
And the reason we license this is the golf course outside of the city limits in Sleepy Eye, then?
Okay. I'll move it. Second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is the three, two percent on off sale license for the Essek Ballpark Association. It's a twenty dollar on sale, twenty dollar off sale. Again, continuing from July first of eighteen to June thirtieth of nineteen.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is the three, two on sale liquor licenses for the Stark Baseball Association, Searls Baseball Association, Siegel Athletic Association, Leavenworth Baseball Association, Church of Japanese Martyrs and the Flying Dutchman Psycho Club, Cockingham Township. Three, two percent on sale license for twenty dollars starting July first of eighteen through June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And my last one is the on off sale liquor license and Sunday liquor licenses for Carl's Corner of Essek and Searls Bar and Grill of Searls, starting July first of two thousand and eighteen through June thirtieth of nineteen. And with these are thirteen hundred dollars for on sale, on off sale liquor license and two hundred dollars for the Sunday liquor license.
I'll move it. I'll second.
And these are higher because they're not limited to three, two.
Okay, we have motion is second. Any other discussion?
One question. Did all of the, the establishments we license go with the Sunday liquor license? Or did some of them not, when they started being available? Is there some that are not Sundays or it just? I just was curious after, I heard a lot of conversation if it was, we couldn't, didn't think it would be profitable to work on or have open on Sunday and but yet everybody's going to spend two hundred dollars to, to do it.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Chair. So when, if the board does, you know, in the fall, we're doing the budget or when we think about renewing or, or increase the fees, do these individuals get individual notice or do we just publish this, the general notice? I suppose it's been a while since we've increased anything.
Yes, yes. Looking back, we could find one of the last ones that they were increasing.
I think we have a public hearing, right? I mean, it would be, be notification for the, at the public hearing.
I guess that would be my general question is do we, do we consider sending individual notices to the people that have the licenses or just, just the general public notice? I think just the general public notice is enough, but out of a courtesy, I don't know if that would be a consideration.
And Mr. Chair, if, if we chose to increase the fee schedule, then it would be obviously in July of the following year that that would go in the.
Correct, for that.
Correct, right?
Well, the, the fee renewals would be effective January first for the record, but the renewal actually comes in July, so whenever that would, renewal would come for each individual group. So. But we'll talk about that in November when we bring this back to the board.
Okay. Did we vote on that? All right. Okay, see November. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Ruth, number thirteen.
This request is to approve the appointment of Jacob Hupman as a full-time engineering instrument technician in the Highway Department. And that would be at the hourly rate of twenty-two point four six four two. That's grade twelve, step four. His anticipated start date would be June eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and that would be pending successful completion of pre-employment screening.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, fifteen.
And this request is to approve the appointment of Holly Berg as a full-time seniors and physically disabled adult social worker. And that would be at her current bachelor's level, social worker position, hourly rate of twenty-six point three zero seventy-five. That's grade fourteen, step six. And that would be effective tomorrow, June sixth, two thousand and eighteen. At this time, we're asking the board to authorize a post for vacancy for a full-time adult mental health social worker, which would be vacated by Holly when she transfers into the seniors and physically disabled social worker position. However, yesterday I've been talking with the department head, they are looking at the needs, the changing needs in the department for the duties of the social worker so that we may come back with another type of, you know, duties and case. But for now, we're going to look at posting the full-time adult mental health and social worker position that she's vacating.
So we are posting it now?
Yes. Unless, in the next couple of days, then we come back to the board at the next meeting and, and change that, so.
So we're really asking for authorization to post, but if Tom comes back with changes, we'll hold off on that.
Correct, yes.
I'll move it. I'll second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, fifteen.
And this request is for the board to consider and refer to pack following recorder department physician descriptions. And that would be the deputy recorder and the chief deputy recorder. We have the two positions. We use the deputy recorder. We have combined the three job descriptions into a deputy recorder position and segregating.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, seventeen A.
And this final request is for the board to appoint Danielle Andrews as a part-time home health aide, homemaker in the Public Health Department. That would be at the hourly rate of seventeen point two one three six, which is grade nine, step two. And her anticipated start date is June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and it's also contingent on the results of performance reviews.
I'll move it. I'll second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thanks, Hugh. Okay, number sixteen, Mr. Andrew.
Just a clarification from the president of the Library Board. For Hanska, Ruth Wellman will be the representative, so we should get that on record before their June meeting coming up.
Move it.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We were talking, we were addressing the Library Board. At this point, I'm on that committee and that meeting is, I believe on the eleventh, right Chuck? That's a week from, a week from last night. And I'm not going to be available. I have to be in Rochester. The wife has some medical things going on in Rochester that afternoon. Will not be back in Brown County in time to go to that meeting. If someone else would like to go, I believe their meeting is Sleepy Eye at the library. You have, I don't found that. Let me look. I think I've got it here. Sleepy Eye, yes, at seven o'clock.
June eleventh.
Yes.
We've got a meeting here at six o'clock in the.
What's the date of this?
Pardon?
What's the date?
Monday, the eleventh. I got reached, I got, Monday, the eleventh is the day that everybody decided that all the meetings should fall on.
Seven PM and I can meet there.
Okay.
Oh, I got a function too.
They, if, they'll do just fine without a committee. Go without that. It's kind of interesting to go there. I enjoy wa, going and finding out what the libraries are doing in the county.
That's at the library, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Right.
It's good to go as an alternate to find out better what each committee is doing and, you know.
I'd say, yeah, it's nice to get along well and go, sit down and something else.
Okay, uh, C one, we got the minutes from May fifteenth. C two is Master Gardener minutes. C three. OA fourteen partnership. Sign the, date and sign the bonding bill, just a letter. In regards to that.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll be attending a meeting on, in July regarding that partnership meeting, but, you know, this was obviously very good news that initially didn't sound like it was going to go our way and, you know, it's not, uh, Nicklick County, part of fourteen, however, Dodge Center, and it opens up the opportunity for, you know, maybe moving that higher on the list in the, in the future. So, I mean, it was, it was very good news for us.
Okay.
The only thing I was a little disappointed was with the senator from, uh, over in that area, when he sent out his big press release and it said Highway fourteen fully funded. Don't, don't let that out there that it's fully funded because people have the wrong idea that it's, okay, now we can forget about Highway fourteen because it's fully funded, so, but I think...
I saw the same thing, that Senator Dasky.
Yeah. He got some feedback on that, so we can walk right back a little bit. It's not fully funded.
Yeah, he was a, he was a big pusher in that area. That was like his top priority, so I think for him, he was showing that he...
I know he wanted to crow and, and it was good, but I thought, I might want to pick your words a little better next time.
Because I, I had heard even from one of the lobbyists that said that, like, huge supporter and, like, literally at those committee meetings, it was, he almost opened every sentence with that, like, when he had the floor. So, I mean, he was, he was a very strong supporter, and I suppose this was his opportunity.
All right.
Okay, um, go to committee reports.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I attended a Complete Streets meeting on May twenty-fourth, seven forty-five here in AM, here in New Ulm. And, um, just for some highlights for the interest of time, but re, there was a report on a traffic study on North Highland Avenue. Um, we expect a final report sometime, probably this week, later this week, and, um, they'll be delivering to the New Ulm Safety Commission, um. And then from there, they're going to, you know, be pursuing that to the New Ulm City Council. Um, had some quite lengthy discussion about the bike circle routes, the crosswalk painting regarding that. There's ten streets involved, and if you're familiar with, there's like a, a bike path that goes, that's using, um, streets, city and county streets, and that's, that's the designated route, and you'll see those bike charrels, they're painted, um. What they're really looking at, like, we had some discussion about having diagonal painted, um, to bring attention to them, and you, you, that's kind of the trend right now. The, the practice is to, to do them, that, the discussion kind of revolved around if you have too much of it, and that's even from the engineers offering some suggestions, saying that if you have too much, then it starts being a point where it doesn't jump, it doesn't grab your attention anyhow. And it's extremely, um, it's, right now, the city of New Ulm, they're, the s- street superintendent said that if we have any more painting involved, because they have to refresh this on an annual basis, he said he simply needs more staff. He can't, he can't do it anymore, because there's just been a lot, a lot of bike charrels, a lot of pedestrian crossings. And then, you know, how this kind of gets into the county is there's some county roads involved, including County Road twenty-nine, and, um, our, the city engineer, um, has worked with Wayne Stevens on that. And as far as that discussion, that the general philosophy is if, you know, they would bring it to us, but, meaning that the county board. But just in discussion, and this is what was shared, it's like, you know, there, it doesn't appear like he's as interested in maybe pursuing painting these pedestrian crossings, because I don't think he has his staff. They just don't do it like the city does it. I mean, the, the city is a very common function of, of, uh, public works. So, we had discussion about that. That is something that maybe we'll have some further discussion on at some point. One, one road that I was looking at was right here on Center Street, that crossing that State Street. You know, that is someplace where I think probably some additional sort of attention to that, because it's a dangerous intersection for pedestrians. There's a lot of county employees and just pedestrians in general that, you know, cross there every morning and, you know, throughout the day, but I think especially in the morning, from my observations, is where it gets pretty dangerous with that heavy traffic. So, I think something like that, that would be probably worth maybe some further discussion, and I'm going to talk with the county engineer about... The, the city, first of all, it's our, it's our road, it's not, it's not the city's, but it's something where I, I think that that, you know, I'm not talking where we'd have to do ten crossings or fifteen, but I think that would be a very, um, good place to have that. The one on twenty-nine, they're, they're not, meaning the Complete Streets, they're not even suggesting that to, to the county simply because we're just talking about that, you can just have too much, and they feel that that's where you're maybe having too much, and people just have to follow the, the signs, the stop signs and stuff like that, because, because bikers have to use that, just like a vehicle does. So, that was, again, just to summarize, a very lengthy discussion, that was, uh, what we had agreed to. So, I, I'm going to be speaking with, um, Mr. Stevens about that, just get, kind of his point of view on that. I'd say that's it. There's, they're talking about where Fifth North is going to be closed, um, in the, in the future here. Two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty, basically from, um, Garden Street all the way up to Highland, so right by the New Ulm Medical Center. So, that'll be, it's more of a, you know, city issue, but that's going to be, uh, kind of difficult for, that's going to be a difficult detour. That's all I have regarding that, Mr. Chair, unless there's questions.
When is that going to happen?
Next year.
Next year?
Yeah. Two thousand and nineteen.
We've already got Seventh North coming in, plugged, plugged up, and well, maybe that'll be open by then.
It won't, because that Seventh, Seventh North is a, is a, well, to the Y, that's going to be a two-year deal, so that'll also be closed. So, yeah, it's going to...
Maybe they'll have the, in the front end here, the couple blocks, whatever it is.
It'll be open to Front Street.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll be, and that'll be open like this fall yet, because they have, when I had gone to those meetings, they had ninety days from the time they start, and they're, they're very confident that will be open this fall to, to Front Street, but it won't be open all the way to the Y. In fact, that'll be, that part of that detour will actually get, I think, a little more difficult for, for traffic coming from Gloucester, because they're going to have to take that detour through Cortland. So, any questions on that or comments? So, that concludes my report, and then the other meeting that I had was regarding, um, emergency management director staffing, and just in the interest of time, I'll defer that to, to you, Mr. Chair, because you're there as well, and I can maybe... That would conclude my reports.
Okay, um, Help Me Grow Meeting, uh, they're sending out booklets for recognizing problems in those young children. Um, they said the referrals are down, but that's basically because it's the end of the school year, and they get a lot more at the beginning of the school year when they see the children for the first time. And they're going to put out booths at, uh, child's fairs and meetings, uh, for outreach and let people know what they're doing. And one notification, uh, there's a car seat checkup for anybody who wants to get theirs looked over and see that it's in code. Uh, at Sleepy Eye, June twelfth, four-thirty to seven-thirty at the Sleepy Eye Medical Center. At the Region Nine Legislative and Communications Committee, um, we had done a priority survey. The top seven items in the survey, transportation, bonding infrastructure, childcare, broadband, local government aid, regional crisis centers, mental health, and opioids. Excuse me. Uh, they're going to focus on two or three points on each issue and push them, and the idea is to come up with, uh, not only to say you got to do something, you want to come up with some possible solutions, some ideas. And, uh, what we're going to try to avoid is just being another voice pushing the same thing like any other lobbying committee. And that's it. Got any questions?
Okay. Is there Region Nine? Information, or is that, that...
Region Nine Legislative and Communications Committee.
Okay. Thank you.
And the Brown Network Community Health Board, Commissioner Simonsen and I, uh, attended, and, uh, Marie was not unavailable to attend that day and do that, but, uh, Fisher, uh, sweat, uh... Stance to attend. Um, had not called in, and we were unaware that he was not even in the state, so we could not conduct business because we did not have the proper, um, makeup there. And, um, but we did, uh, review what was there. Of course, we couldn't take any action, but, uh, the ship grants were, uh, released to, um, be, um, paid. They actually, uh, in our past year, following that, um, we really don't have control of ship grants, and once they're approved at the state level, they're ready to go, so. So, those were, were set out. The rest of the bills and things are going to have to come to the next meeting, so. We did try to reschedule a meeting. Um, they, that same day, uh, a phone, uh, meeting, uh, they said we could do, and Maurice was available to do that. However, we, they didn't do it that day. They wanted to do it like three days later, and I was notified when I was working away from the office, so I didn't have anything to write down at the time, so I forgot it, and obviously you...
I called in, so...
You called, you did call in?
Yeah, so we got it approved.
Oh, you did get it approved, okay, okay, okay. When I talked to her, you hadn't called yet.
Yeah, right.
So...
I, I, I had forgotten about it too, but luckily ten minutes later I remembered.
Okay, good, good. Well, then, everything is, take care of it.
Approve the ship grants and, and pay the bills.
Yeah, I don't think there was any, um, huge, uh, huge thing there, so, okay. Wellness Committee, again, with Commissioner Simonsen and I are both sitting on, on committee. There was a, a lot of discussion. Uh, I really do feel that the, uh, the wellness effort we have been putting forth is starting to get some foothold and, uh, starting to take, take hold here, uh, for the county, and, uh, was encouraged by that. Um, they are doing, you heard, uh, Attorney Treasurer talk about playing pickleball for the meeting here, and, uh, that is part of the wellness program, that they're having pickleball, uh, uh, from the courthouse here. They get together one night a week and, and, uh, actually go out and play pickleball together, so I, that was really a great idea. Um, they're, uh, they've been delivering some fruit. Uh, they've done some bananas in the past here, and they did peaches, uh, not too long ago evidently, evidently. They're talking about, uh, now it's summer coming on, they're doing, uh, there's a machine that was at the egg show, maybe, or was it? Or the home show, one of the two, that did facial. Uh, you put your face into this device, and it tells you where, where there might be risk spots for skin cancer on your, on your face, and, uh, and they're, they're going to bring that in, and they're going to, um, supply, uh, sunscreen information and, uh, sample and give a, a better idea of what, um, the, the numbers and how often to apply it and all this kind of stuff, uh, get information out of that, talk about sunglasses that are, um, safe, um.
They talked also about hydration stations in the county buildings, and there's some retrofit as far as like filling water bottles from the, uh, the drinking fountains. They're, I think they're, they're cheaper than a regular hydration station would be, so they're going to look into that, see what that would cost for most drinking water, so, um, look at that, and there's one other thing.
And their past budget hit, but we had, we used to fund this at ten thousand dollars, and, uh, we weren't using it initially. And that's, you know, things needed to get up and running, and, uh, now we're at the point where we actually are going to fall a little short. We, we had dropped down to seventy-five hundred, and so, um, probably going into the budget, uh, of next year, um, will be recommendation to increase that back up to the ten thousand dollar level, so, um... Yeah, I don't know if there was any other...
I think that's about it. Uh, I guess we looked at the survey and just...
Yeah.
Kind of reviewed that, and a, a lot of positive comments, so. Things are headed in the right directions.
Um, I just noticed here that, you know, Gina dropped out these, uh, landowner, uh, the redetermination of benefits on fifty-seven and sixty-nine, which happens to be June eleventh, which was the day everybody was busy doing things. I don't know whose these would be or how...
They pretty much all, pretty, well, I'll talk about that when we get into that.
Okay.
It's also, I have a conflict with several meetings, that's, these are part of them that day, I, those, so, we'll get to, we'll wait till we get to you. Okay. Um, all right, and then the trip to DC, um, Wednesday, uh, evening, um, NAICO, uh, had a, uh, briefing, and, um, went down there, and, uh... What are yours here? They, uh, they had a list of legislative priorities that counties have with the, with the federal government, and, uh, some of the, uh, main ones here were, um, promote county infrastructures, uh, priorities, um... Uh, let me see here if I can read my notes. They talked about, um, currently there's a, um, in the past, people who had bonding, uh, issues, municipal bonds, um, you could rewrite your, uh, bond to save interest in lower, you know, if you could get a lower rate, whatever, so that they could be rewritten. And, uh, there's a new law that's been passed that, um, does not allow them to do that, and, uh, any bond that was issued would have to be, uh, run out completely in maturity before they could, you, you could do anything. And, uh, of course, here at Brown County, that wasn't a major concern, uh, as we, uh, had no, uh, situations of, of that. But obviously, a lot of, uh, counties did have major concerns with that, so they were, uh, supporting that. They talked about supporting the payment in lieu of taxes, the PILT, and, um... They talked about opioid, uh, problem, um, and substance abuse. They feel that, and make a really long story short here, they feel that the, uh, op- opioid problem, part of it stems from, um, Medicare demanding that doctors, in order for them to feed, uh, receive their highest compensations and to be reimbursed, um, needed to start doing, uh, keeping track of that they were eliminating all pain for, for patients. Okay? So, in order for them to receive their highest reimbursement from Medicare, they had to make sure that that patient didn't have any pain. So, what did that promote? The use of opioids. So, now, there's, the, the, NAICO was taking the stance that, you know, the federal government here needs to step up, and they were the ones that caused this issue, um, in addition to the drug manufacturers, and, uh, so that is their, um, platform that, uh, this is, this has been caused by the federal government, now the federal government needs to stand up and, and help, uh, get the problem straightened out. Uh, the, the, uh, loss of, uh, VA coverage and... The, the loss of VA coverage and Medicaid, when a person is arrested, well, right now, if somebody gets arrested, put in jail, they immediately lose their VA benefits or their Medicaid benefits, so now they're on the county's dollar. That should be changed to conviction, not arrest, because if they actually were innocent, now we took away their benefits and they didn't have any, and we got stuck with the bill anyway. So, that made a lot of sense to try to push for that. Again, it's, it's not at the time of arrest, it's a time of conviction, is what it should be, but that's not what it is now. Working towards a more effective definition of the waters of the US, obviously, the last time, that was a disaster, and so that is still being reworked and relooked at. Support county authority to collect existing sales tax. I commented with them on that, in that our brick and mortars businesses in rural areas cannot compete without, and we're losing our tax dollars, and, and so the brick and mortar places go under, and the internet survives, and they're not paying any tax on the, on the internet purchases. And we need to have that back here, that needs to get corrected. He kinda didn't sound like that was a main priority for him, but then when I had, had a discussion with that, they said, well, they actually are, the case is going to the Supreme Court in June. So, keep your eyes open, ears open, and see what happens. Okay, so that was some of their major items. President Trump's released legislative outline of infrastructure plan. They are, the administration, Trump administration, is putting a big push out to update infrastructure and to get that in, in better condition. The new funding for incentive programs has been funded, a new 100 billion is going towards the rural infrastructure, 50 billion. Transformative programs, 20 billion. Expansion of existing loan programs, 20 billion, and Federal Capital Financing Fund, 10 billion. So, they are, that is his, one of his goals in his administration, I heard that more than once, and we heard that from the White House staff, that, that is a major push for that administration, is to update the infrastructure. There are pending EPA regulations of interest to counties, had a list of those, obviously the waters of the US are there. Additional, it's gonna be proposed, we'll hit, know more about it in late 2018 is when that will come about. Drinking water regulation, bioreactor wetland regulations, looking into that. This is all still from NACO here. Unfunded mandates and other regulatory impacts on counties. They've got a whole list here, Clean Air Act, and ozone standards, Clean Water Act, pesticide regulation, those, these are all mandates, but there's no funding built into them. Okay, that's, that was pretty much everything at NACO that evening. Then on Thursday morning, we went to the White House, and we met in the Gwade Eisenhower complex building next to the White House, it's where the Vice President's office is. Huge, huge structure. And we started at 10 o'clock, and we had, and this is a spare copy here that I will read here. We met with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 representatives, federal representatives from different government agencies here. We met with the Agricultural Department, the USDA, Army Corps of Engineers, Corps of National and Community Service, Environmental Protection Agency, Housing and Urban Development, Transportation, Veterans Affairs, and the Executive Secretary to Legislative Affairs, Intergovernmental Affairs Board. So, end result here, we, we met from 10 o'clock until 2:20. They had, we, they certainly didn't wow us with pampering. We sat on some pretty hard chairs, and we had one five, and I mean five-minute break to use the bathroom and to drink water out of a drinking fountain, there was no bottled water, there was no, and otherwise, they had us sitting in front of speakers the whole period of time. I do have some information that I brought back, and I'll share with the appropriate people here. I talked to, let's see, it was, I forget this guy's name here. Tim at Corporation for National and Community Service about the USAC, disposal of medications and their cost for incineration, the $600, $700 a time. And his, he had one of his department people meet with me afterwards, and Jacqueline Hackett, and she said to get ahold of her, and she thought that there would be funding available to make that happen. So, that I'll pass on to you. Army Corps of Engineers, they, you know, they do watershed planning and watershed issues. There was, they do ecosystem restoration, they, they get involved in that. And I wondered if there was a possibility to have them help work with Wood Lake and the issue out there. You know, you got an ecosystem that you're trying to keep there, and yet you've got a water problem, that's, and that, so that might be an area that we maybe should look into and see if there would be some benefit there to that. Ryan Fisher, and again, got all of these contact informations are here, but I thought there might be a possibility of that. They did, when we talked about drug programs, and they actually did bring up the USAC-type programs of, of community support and, and what they, you know, wanted them to do. He said, you know, the group has to have a plan, and it has to work, and it has to be updated, and you know, that's how, how they want that, to promote that. But he talked about, you know, people think that there isn't a problem, whatever he, he said in Nebraska, just happened, they pulled over a vehicle for a taillight out, and they got 118 pounds of, of fentanyl, whatever. And 118 pounds of that is enough to supply 20 million lethal doses. Lethal, so it's that potent, you know, and it would supply 20 million lethal doses, so that obviously was a big, big hit there. We couldn't bring any, the reason I'm operating off of these little sheets of paper, we couldn't bring any electronics, we couldn't bring any pads, anything in with us, so am I using my little hotel pad here? I'm trying to write, going on a pad, security is very tight. I wish I had more room to have taken notes here. This was, they talked, the, the egg department talked about risks, they, they, they do risk management for crops, they do loans, partnerships in local conservation, small farms. There was some, there was some discussion on small farms versus large farms, and I do not have enough notes here to give you information on that. The EPA, Environmental Protections Agency, talked with us, and so I discussed with Preston Corey, asked a question about the leachate problem we have, and not being able to get an extended date of being able to use the spray field, and, you know, how we cut that off and put it back in, like the alfalfa off, put it back in the landfill, and, and that this is a problem, and she, what it's worth, sounded encouraging, she said to contact them, and that they would, she'd like to know more about this, and she knew it was the Minnesota PCA was regulating this, and, and so we definitely need to contact the EPA, Corey, Preston Cor, Corey Preston, I guess, or Preston Corey. And so that sounded like we could gain some, some value there possibly. The Department of Transportation, they talked about, you know, gas tax, of course, it's never, never popular, but also, they, they talked about autonomous vehicles, there are gonna be more guidance coming out in August on that, and what's gonna happen there. You know, they're, they're looking at what's gonna happen with electric vehicles and the expansion of those areas, and so it's not just as easy as to say, well, let's just put some gas tax on. They did talk about that drones, they, they issued their first approval of 10 pilot programs. One of them is a 1,500-pound drone in Florida that is going out to spray mosquitoes, to kill the mosquito population, and that has just been approved down there. So, I don't know, obviously, what all the guidelines and rules are, but they are working in those areas as well. Community purchasing was discussed, to some extent. They wanted to know more information about that, which I will make sure gets sent to And I think that was pretty much everything I had here for now. Vice President Pence did come in and talk to us, we didn't know that he was going to be there or do that, and I actually got to shake his hand twice. That's pretty much it. Everybody got any other questions?
Mr. Chair, regarding that, the USAC, it's, the incinerations right now is right around $700, is that still...
As far as I know, that's the last I had heard, was $600, $700.
And that's what it used to be. I know the sheriff's taking that over to Blueworth County. That's, am I correct that that gets taken out of an environmental non-levy fund through?
I guess getting taken out of the SCOR fund?
Is that correct?
Possible.
With, with Mr. Niceley?
Right now, it is.
Is that still permanent though?
I believe so.
Okay. It just, when you had said that, it just kinda, the question just kinda popped in my head. Thank you.
So, the value of this trip, I think, was way more than I anticipated. If they do this in the future, in the reason that, that the White House bypassed the National Association, the State Association, because they didn't line up anything here, those guys were purposely left out, because they wanted to hear the grassroots level from the counties. They wanted to know, they don't say, they said, we listen to these other people, and we, we understand, and we, and we know their importance, but we wanna know, are we missing something that they're not telling us? What is important out there to you guys? And so, I, I, I was oppressed. It was intense, but it was very good discussion. Now, if we can gain any of this, I think we've got areas here that will more than offset the, the value and cost of that trip, 10 times over, if, if we can make the connections. They, they want us to be aware of the connections that are there, because there's a, you know, a lot of stuff they can do for us that we just didn't even realize was there, you know?
We kind of assume that the State Association does that, and they do, but it's good for us to have that connection too, so, yeah, that's good.
Probably not.
Okay, all right. We had a PAC meeting two weeks ago, I, did you...
I didn't report on that.
Okay, well, we just, we just went through the assessor positions and, and pointed those, so, got through all those, and I, there was a couple that may have changed, I don't remember with the specifics.
A little bit, it was, it was kind of a standard procedure, they went up a little bit, like you would expect they do. Six positions, county assessor, deputy assessor, senior appraiser, appraiser, assessment technician, and senior assessment technician.
Yeah. So, went through those, and we got another meeting lined up for...
Eighteenth.
Okay. Okay, that's it for PAC. I went to the town hall meeting in, in Sleepy Eye, you know, the usual stuff about what, what they talked about, I guess, the, the question I raised was just the, the state departments, the rulemaking that we see with, you know, whether it's PFCs with, with little leachate, you know, the, the state lowered the standard, and some of the things that the departments do without legislators, and from what Mr. Davis had talked about, is, you know, because they're part-time legislators, they feel that they need to have this, because they're there all the time and the legislators aren't there, and that's kind of the reason why some of this happens, but I told them by displeasure of some of the things that they do, and, anyway, I brought it up to their attention anyway, so, but, a small crowd there, but I guess they talked about what happened and what didn't happen during the legislative session, so. Yesterday, I met with Stark Township out at the Iberia King Landing, there's some erosion of our property, a lot of erosion actually, I think originally was a acre, now I'm sure it's a couple acres less now, but John Niceley has talked to the RCRC engineer, and, and we'll be meeting out there next week sometime, I don't think we have a date down, but at least look at it, there was some work done there five years ago.
We've done, we've done work there a couple things that I remember have been washed out.
Yeah.
Less than five years ago, even, I think.
Yeah, it was right before I got on, I believe, and there's some, it's like some little structures that, that point out into the river, and where those were put, it's obvious that those worked, so, you know, I guess we'll see what the engineer says, but if there's something similar to that that can be done again, or, or bigger, I mean, when that, when that river gets high, it actually goes over a canoe landing, and, and you can see where it's digging out on our property, going straight towards the bridge. The real concern there is that bridge that's right there, if we don't do anything, it's gonna continue to erode. I believe it would be the south, south edge of that bridge, you know, we could start eroding that end of the bridge, so...
And the river changed course there a little bit, too, it used to take a wider swing.
Yeah, it used to.
And now it cuts it and heads straight into that self-convailing.
Yeah, and it's continuing to do that, so, whatever work we can do to try to change that. Anyway, we got the engineer on board, and I'll see what they, they say going forward, And this morning, we met with Lane in regards to, he is looking at the emergency management part of his job. It's kind of getting to where there's a need for maybe a three-quarter time, or possibly a full-time emergency management person. There's more things that could be done that aren't being done, such as community outreach and some different things, and Karen in, in public health, she, she contributes to that too, and I know she's got a lot of work under, with those staff, that they're already overworked, so, anyway, the proposal, we're kind of putting some numbers together, if, if we add a person, or, you know, where, what department that person goes into, I guess, that's some discussion right now, so. There's already, there's some grant money that we're getting for that, that goes towards that in the amount of 22,000, so. There's already, there's some grant money that we're getting for that, that goes towards that in the amount of 22,000, so. So, I guess we'll see with the numbers and we've got another meeting lined up for two weeks, I believe, so.
And Mr. Chair, yeah, the, the 22,000 comes from an emergency management performance grant that they receive. And there's also potentially, we had talked about maybe some other sources of, of funding. On that emergency management readiness grant, I think I actually serve on, on that as far as a liaison with, with all the, actually with all the counties. And I had talked recently at the Public Safety at the, at the last legislative conference about that. That it's very promising with that readiness grant because realistically what that would involve, it, it would provide money that's not earmarked for the various counties and that would go specifically for emergency management. But what they see right now, and I've talked with Lane about this and I've talked with other county emergency managers, is the money's earmarked, so it has to be used for communication or needs to be used for, for this and it's, it's not an efficient way of using it because it's either use it or lose it type of, of mentality. Where with something like this, the way Brown County, because we're structured different than Wanton County and Wanton County's structured different than Sibley and Blueworth, because of our populations and over time how we're set up, it's, it would just be beneficial and efficient for us just to have money provided by the state that we can just use. It's not earmarked for a specific item. And I, at the town hall that I attended, and I believe Commissioner Winchell, you had joined us when I was talking with Representative Torkelson right after the meeting about that. That this year regarding that readiness grant, that's probably, and we expected it wasn't gonna be real realistic because it's a bonding year. And they're basically our lobbyists from Association of Minnesota Emergency Managers and also from AMC. They're, they're just working on planting the seed and next year's where they're really, they, they consider more realistic. Talking with Representative Torkelson, he said he'd be supportive and Senator Davis appears like he'd be supportive of, of that as well because it's not earmarked. It, it's, you know, it'd be a better way of, of utilizing that, that money according to this. So, and, and talking with, this morning I talked with Mr. Sletta, it appears the feedback he's getting from Johansson, who's also actively involved with this readiness grant. He's a, he's an emergency manager from Norman County, said that the feedback they're getting is that there's, there's some, some support, so hopefully next year. And that would also help with something like this, so, thank you, that's, that's all I got.
I, I think the only other thing is, is looking at Lane's position, you know, as, as a solid waste officer, he's, he's spending more time with that, obviously, with the work that we're doing at the landfill and the issues that the state raises, so there's more work that he spends his time with in regards to that. And Robert, right now, he's 50% feedlot, 50% emergency management, but between feedlot and planning and zoning, he spends a lot more time than 50% on that, so. And with the emergency management in today's world, there's, there's more things that we can do with that to, to be better prepared. So, anyway, it's, I guess right now we're, we're looking at it. I guess if you got input on it, let us know.
I think you're doing what would be concerned to me is the wage and to be able to recap how much can we get re, you know, how much would you reimburse? And that's an important part of it, so.
So, Chuck and Lane will put some numbers together and see what it looks like going forwards.
We'll meet in two weeks with the Chair and the Vice Chair and then the following board meeting, we'll have an RBA for the full board to consider.
Okay, and I think that's all I've got, so.
My just short report on the town hall meeting, Springfield had a pretty good crowd, I would say 20, 25 people were there, so. And they spent a lot of time, again, recapping past legislative session, they did get some questions. I, because we've been talking about the childcare or the daycare issue, spent a little time with them on that issue and reiterated how important it was to the county. And they've been working on it, but again, it doesn't hurt to remind them of that, so that was the area. I kind of touched base with them and then they had some stuff on some other areas and other people in the community had used up all the time and couldn't probably use that much more again too. That's all I have.
Okay, all right, so that'll do it for committee reports, so if there's nothing else, we'll go on to calendaring. Okay, today is the fifth, so the rest of today.
I'm on my way this afternoon to Wilmer for Minnesota Housing Partnership Conference.
Building Committee, Building Committee right after this one.
Five o'clock, Finance for Brown County Historical Society.
I've got Building Committee.
I'm open for us today.
The sixth.
The second day at Minnesota Housing Conference, all day.
District seven.
Eight o'clock, District seven, time writing.
We need to leave here at 7:15, so, and we'll be on, we have the STS van, so we'll be on Turner Hall side, but we should leave by 7:15.
Okay, I've got District seven also.
Same for me.
Okay, the seventh.
Open.
Open.
SCA change in overtime.
Oh, let's see, I have Blanden Luncheon at noon.
Correct, at the K.
Yep, and then I've also got a USAC meeting, Sustainability meeting at 9:30 in the morning. That's it.
I'm, I'm open.
Okay, the eighth.
Open.
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 The eleventh.
Open.
Open. Brown County Historical Society, we're gonna be seven o'clock.
I got Library Board, seven o'clock.
Okay, that's, today I've got a couple things, then I got Area Two RCRC in the morning at Mar- at River Falls. Also have those ditch meetings in Springfield, one is in Sleepy Eye. And I'm, could follow up on things until about noon and then I have to be in Rochester for my wife, doctor appointment by three something. So, I, so what I'm gonna need to do is if somebody can cover the RCRC Area Two, that would be good because the two meetings are in Springfield. One of them is a ditch we have property on, maybe I shouldn't be at that one, I don't know. I'm okay with either way, I'll, I'll, I'll go and cover either the Area Two or, or the ditch meetings, whichever, if somebody else wants, has a preference to do one or the other. And I won't be able to cover the one in Sleepy Eye after lunch either.
Well, I can do the Sleepy Eye one. That's at 1:30?
I, yep, 1:30.
And the other ditch meetings are in?
In Springfield, I, let's me double check that, I thought.
10:30.
They're at the Community Center.
10:30 in Springfield, I can cover that.
There's one at nine o'clock also.
I don't see that one here.
That's, she gave us that one a couple weeks ago.
I can cover them.
So then you're, you're.
And I'll do the Area Two RCRC.
All right. Okay.
And then Dean, so you do the, the library meeting that evening, so got me covered, I appreciate the, the help to get through that day.
Okay, we got that, all right, so we're on to the 12th.
At 8:45 AM, I have a, regarding Brown County Evaluation Center, I have an interview, I'm on the interview panel, that's likely to be on the interview panel for a supervisor position down there. And then at 2 PM, I have the Sioux Trails corporate meeting, that's Sioux Trails in Hall.
Sioux Trails.
Sioux Trails, what time was that again, two o'clock?
Two.
Okay, I've got Sioux Trails at two.
I got Planning and Zoning at four noon and then I got Sioux Trails at two.
Okay, the 13th, open.
Public Health meeting.
Open.
Uh, open.
I'm gonna be unavailable for the 13th and 14th, I just got some surgery going on, I may be ill.
Okay, the 14th, open.
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 Available.
15th, open.
Shack meeting, same call.
Open.
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 Eighteenth, Joint Power Workforce meeting at 4 PM and then I have on here a Board of Review at 7 PM.
Highway meeting at one and Board of Review at seven.
Board of Review at seven, just a reminder, there is no premium, I think.
I have the same.
I've got a highway meeting at one and one and Board of Review at evening. Mr. Andrew, do you know if they've got people that have, are we gonna have people here or?
I, I believe there's three appointments, the last I heard, so you should be getting to PAC it on that soon.
Thank you.
Then a meeting at that Alfred, is that at one or is that at two?
Actually, it's, it's, it's at Alfred's pit at two.
Okay.
Okay. I hadn't looked, I thought it was two o'clock, yeah, I've been at two. So.
Okay, is that it for the eighteenth?
Yep.
All right, then the nineteenth, puts us two weeks out, right? Okay, is there anything else?
I want to clarify those ditch meetings, I've only, I only see the one in Sleepy Eye, you said there was two?
One in Sleepy Eye and two in Springfield.
Two in Springfield.
We got earlier, if you don't, she had handled, handed this to us a couple weeks ago when we had a meeting, that was at nine o'clock, I don't remember which ditch it was.
There's no paper on that, did you?
Not here.
Here, we got it right here, there's, there's the one you're missing.
Well, I probably got it.
So, Mr. Chairman, on July, on June 19th, we have Emergency Management Staffing, Commissioner Borger and Simmensen at 8 AM. And then there's also a meeting with Keystone, with Commissioner Berg and Simmensen at one o'clock, do you have that on your calendar?
What's that for?
That is the Salary Consultant. So, we have the board meeting and at one o'clock, Commissioners Berg and Simmensen with the consultant. Yes.
Was there a MTRP meeting?